Adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn.
Excuse me. Open the meeting.
I like that.
Yeah. They're thinking out loud. Anyway, okay, we'll start with the pleasure allegiance, please.
Pleasure allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands with a nation unworthy of God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I like your names.
Thanks. Show notice.
May we have a roll call, please?
No. Paul Gonzalez.
Here.
Rod Cadal.
Here.
Tracy Bartlett.
Here.
John Ewan.
Here.
And Trenton Lee.
Here.
Okay, so, okay, on to, for this evening, for the items listed, is there any conflict of interest for the members?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm trying to fasten that noise.
Okay, all right. Okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Tracy, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Approval of the minutes, we're going to have two sets of minutes, two for the site visits, and then one for the regular meeting. But before that, I'd like to make some adjustments to the minutes for the last meeting. On page one, under number six, public comment was opened at 6:36 and closed at 6:36.
Sorry.
That's how fast we are.
Didn't even happen.
Speed of light. There's a better one coming up. On page two, one, two, under number A, on the board discussion in the middle, bullet number one, last sentence, the word "two," benef- it might be "two," it's T-O-O, close.
Where's it at?
Next bullet is...
It's in the parentheses at the end of that bullet.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Second bullet, how the garage, how will the garage be maintained if that "close," not "O-D"?
I hate that.
Also, could you add that there was public comment, and the public comment opened at 7:10 and closed at 7:10? There's no public comment listed, but there was public comment opened and closed.
I have a correction too, Mr. Chair. Will you have a second?
Okay, I'll just finish and then I'll hand it over to you. On page three, on number 10, public comment, we opened at 7:29 and closed at 7:29. And those were the changes. And just to let you know, what I did is I reviewed the meeting to make sure we got all the times in there correctly, so that was done. Yes, sir?
On page one, for roll call, Lindsey Wolf was not present, absent and excused, and Trenton Lee was here in her place.
Okay.
If I shouldn't use those things, that's already filled out.
Okay. Are there any other changes, corrections, or adjustments to the minutes?
Make a motion the minutes for that meeting be accepted as amended? I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have approval for the two site visits of May 9. Minutes. That'd be page nine of 33.
I make a motion to approve both site visits from May 9 of 2023, the minutes for both site visits.
And I'll second that.
Moved by Tracy, seconded by Trenton for the...
I missed the second minute, so I can't vote on that.
Okay. All right, so for the first set of minutes for the 2370 Black Forest Lane, was that your approval?
Yes.
Second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. For the second site visit of May 9, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Moved by Tracy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trenton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, could you put your microphone down and get rid of some of our people?
Down?
Preston.
Okay, we'll open up for public comment at 6:36.
There is. First of all, Beth Friend, Supervisor, East Bay Township. I'm here tonight just to extend appreciation to Preston Taylor. As you all know, Preston is moving on from East Bay Township, and we wish him the very best. He has a great opportunity for himself and his family, but we have very much enjoyed having him work with us as zoning administrator. He has learned a lot, implemented a lot, and done a great job, and really cultivated some good relationships within the township and with residents and visitors alike and businesses. And so we very much appreciate the two years that he spent with us. I can remember talking to him when we first considered, when he first considered the job, and going through the interview process, and he came on at a time when we were dealing with a tough flight issue, and was a tremendous help. And just really have enjoyed working with him, as I know all of our coworkers have, and I know that all of you have as well. So just wanted to officially thank him and come and acknowledge the work that he's done for East Bay Township. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He even came back for tonight.
For tonight.
And we can second all those comments. All right, is anybody else? Okay, we'll close it at 6:38. Okay, correspondence, I didn't see any. You'll have it wherever's in your pack. And reports, township report.
Yeah, we just had our meeting last night. We accepted a Rotary Seed Grant for the Holiday Woodland Natural Area to do some planning and design work up there, and we approved the Spark Grant application for the community gardens that's going to, that's proposed for out behind the building here. We also did work on the short-term rental ordinance rewrite, and we set it for an introduction next month, and so there's been some adjustments to it, some amendments to it. The big one that we had several months of discussion was changing the frequency of the stays at the short-term rental. So instead of four-night, four-day, it's going from four to seven-day frequency. So you can have a stay every seven days, starting after their current contracts that they have out, their current agreements that they have. So that introduction will be in Jul-, I think in July, and so we could possibly have the public hearing for it in August. So that was a big, a big task done. We did approve the zoning amendment for the parking standards. The Planning Commission had requested or referred to us at the board, and so we approved that last night. I'm not sure what the process is for that now, but it's through the board, so now it's back to the Planning Commission. And then they've started work at our Beautis Five for the redesign that we've got going there, the new fishing pier, the ADA kayak launch, flush bathrooms, new benches and picnic tables and whatnot, and paving, repaving the parking lot. So a lot of work there. It will be closed all summer, though, so just don't go thinking you're going to fish and swim off of there, because you're not. So, but that will be a huge, huge project started, so. And they were there Monday morning. It was like right on time, so. And then we approved purchasing an ambulance that will not be delivered until 2025, December of 2025, but it is taking that long to get them built and delivered. So we put the order in. Now, we have, we only have to pay 10% in January of '24 in order to get it in '25. So, and it was already in the capital plan, but it just wasn't planned to do it this early when we put that together. But we found that also with the fire department, the fire truck, we had to order two years in advance, so. But other than that, it was pretty good meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I'll give you, for the Planning Commission, we had a couple of items that came up. The first was a, not an action item, but it was a discussion item on setting up a preschool in the industrial district, and that would probably require some type of a zone amendment. That was just discussion, and that act will probably be taking place later if it comes before the board. There was an approval for a bed and breakfast, not so much a bed and breakfast, but for them to use non-motorized boats that would not leave the lake in the Forest Lakes area, I think it was Chandler Lake, that we, that we approved on that. And also, we had approval or site visit, not site visit, excuse me, yeah, site visit and an approval for the Blue Sky Boat Rental up on the East Bay. And that was the actions that we took. So, thank you. Okay. Okay, we have one business item at this point, and that is a continuance of a discussion that we had last meeting with Mr. Benedict, and this is for a variance for the building of a garage at his property at 2370 Black Forest Lane, which is in the Forest Lakes area, and that is parcel number 280332800100. Again, this is a continuance of that Appeal 323. So with that, I'll turn it over to, yes?
Can we have a motion to take it off the table?
Excuse me?
A motion to remove it from the table.
Oh, okay, okay, fine, thank you. Okay.
I make a motion to untable it, reconvene, reconvene the Appeal Request 3-23.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Tracy, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Thank you. Preston?
As a quick reminder, at our meeting last month, when this was tabled until tonight, in my findings, in the staff report of the basic seven conditions, number six and number seven, I noted as not being satisfied. Number six, noting that the variance request is self-created, and that the applicant has a garage already, and potentially the applicant could position the proposed garage further east on the property, potentially eliminating the need for a variance. That was number six. Number seven, that there was no reasonable alternative location in the parcel. I said that that was not satisfied, as the applicant could potentially move the proposed garage further east, again, reducing, potentially reducing or eliminating the need for a variance. That was tabled. Mr. Benedict and I had a couple email exchanges, I believe one of them is attached in your packet, where I wanted to ensure that he did want to continue on and have this before the board again, to which he said that he did. And then the one email that is attached to your packet, he notes some concessions or changes that he made to go before the board tonight. As a reminder, on the first appeal, dimensional variance, he wanted to be one foot from the property line, essentially asking for a nine-foot variance, as a side yard setback, which is 10 feet in the Lakes District. He would now be asking for a four-foot variance, four-foot variance, it would be six feet off the property line. On that email that is attached, he also explains some of the challenges for being any further back or away from that property line that you can review. And in considering this appeal along with the concessions, while I certainly recognize his attempt to be more in compliance with the side yard setback that's in place, again, six and seven, that are, I believe, as a keeper of the ordinance, I have to say that they were not satisfied still that the applicant still has a garage, a very nice garage. I certainly understand the desire to have a second garage, but that he does have a garage, and that he could potentially move it further away. But again, we're pointing you to that email where he notes the challenges to move it further south or east from that west side property line. With conditions six and seven, in my humble opinion, still not being met, none of the special conditions were evaluated, and my conclusion would basically be the same as it was last month, not to, not to approve. And again, as noted, it could be potentially moved further east on the applicant's property, or potentially even south, although not noted on here, southeast. The, there are some challenges to include the removal of at least one mature tree, and as noted in the email from Mr. Benedict, the retaining wall, that would be a challenge, and the topographical challenges that are back there as the property slopes as you continue south.
Thank you. Mr. Benedict, want to come up and?
Albert Benedict, 2370 Black Forest Lane. Thank you again for meeting here this month with me. I mean, as Preston said, I have, going back to the drawing board, I'm thinking now I can do a four-foot variance, so I'll put my foundation at six feet off of the property line. And the big items are the retaining wall that is already there at, if I went to the 10-foot mark, the 10-foot setback, the east side of the garage would intrude on that, and I would have to start taking that down. Again, more dirt work, as we got, the hill goes up over there, and everything is sand by us, so, you know, that also adds another complication, as you start digging into there, you know, I'm from Ohio originally, so it's all clay. So when you dig, it stays. So as you dig and go, and more and more dirt, it's higher, you know, it can lead to a lot of challenges. So, you know, I'm asking for a four-foot variance, I'm going to push it back, so south. That way, hopefully, I won't have to take either of those two maples down that are right there now, and still be able to, you know, I think one of the items I brought up last time was the way the driveway sits, right, why I originally asked for nine feet was go straight in. If, even though I'm not intending to use it as a permanent car or permanent garage for my car, if I would like, need the ability, you know, or need the access to pull a car, I'd like to have that versus shifting it over. So, you know, I did some digging, you know, I conceded a little bit. I know we talked about the well position, that was a concern last time. They, that, I talked to, the health department is not a concern, they have a three-foot setback from your overhangs, which either, either way, would be fine there. So, you know, I think with, with the hill, with nobody objecting, right, we have the letter from a neighbor, she does not object to any variance. Four-foot would be very sufficient for me to build what I need.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to, yes?
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, well, if you don't mind staying there. Okay?
I'll start.
Go right ahead.
On your latest drawing, where you have the six feet from the side yard, I noticed that the retaining wall does not go up to the garage in your drawing. How far is that wall back? How much wall would you have to take down?
So if I went to 10 feet, I'd probably have to do, two feet maybe would overlap, and then however else much I would need to take down to be able to dig footers. So I'm no excavation expert, so probably another three, four feet, so you're talking six feet total, and it's about waist-high.
But, I mean, did you talk with the excavator about that, or?
I mean, yeah, so, I mean, it would be on me, it would be on me to move the wall, but, you know, his concern was, the more you go to the east, the hill gets higher in that back corner, so it's just more dirt we're going to have to move and, and play with, and, you know, with the sand, and being able, you know, the higher it up it goes, it's the more you just have to move. And it's just where we're going to put it, what challenges are we going to face. I mean, sand continues to just slide and slide and slide, so you may have to dig out more to be able to get your footers in, so you can get an area where, or get it to a position where the sand will stop sliding, so they can put the footers in.
I also noticed on your drawing for the building itself, that the door seems to be offset from the front, on the front of the house, or on the front of the garage, I'm sorry, from center. Can you give us an idea, it's a 10-foot by 10-foot door in a 20-foot wall, you didn't label maybe how far to one side, I mean, can that door move over so you can still get straight in?
Yeah, so I have it, it's going to be two foot, when you're looking at it on the right, eight foot to the left of the door. I want to leave it two foot off the sidewall, so if you pull a car and you have room to open the door, I feel like that's about as far as I can go. While moving over, I mean, it is going to be off-center of the driveway. I think, you know, the center of the driveway was about where we, the edge of the garage would be at a 10-foot variance. So I don't really have too much leeway unless I put the garage door basically on the edge of the front, if that makes sense.
All right. Just trying to get a relationship to the thing. No problem, no problem.
Did the excavator say if you dug into the wall or destroyed part of the wall, if that would have an effect on the hill behind it? Like, how much is that holding in? Like, would it start falling in?
It's hard, he didn't say, but it's hard to tell. I mean, we, we've moved a little dirt, and where we know, at least part of the garage is going to be, and it just continues to fall. So, I mean, I guess it's only trial and error, right? Take it out and see what happens would be our, our best guess.
Is your, is your plan to backfill against the concrete wall in the back and the sides? I see you have it stepped up.
Yes, we will backfill, obviously in the back, and then just to a certain degree, try to grade it down on the sides.
So, to me, that, the landslide, if you want to call it, is nonexistent. Once you get the building built, you just backfill, and it, it goes away, because your backfill board isn't going to slide.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge is getting to a position.
Right, but that's, that's doable. Also, the, the wall, you've got it three feet, if I'm reading this schematic right, you got it three feet away from the building. I can't find it. And that wall doesn't look very, very substantial to me. If you're already three feet away, and you're going to move it over four feet, you can just, you can just rebuild that wall up to the garage. rebuild that wall up to the garage and maybe put a set of steps next to the garage to go up to however high that landing is. And that takes away some of the sand falling down along the side of the garage there. So, I just am not seeing anything that can't be overcome by allowing a 10-foot variance, to tell you the truth.
Tracy?
Yeah, I took a drive out there tonight, because I just wanted to get another real-life visual, and I saw that you had done some earth movement. So, I was a little concerned about that, because I'm like, what if you don't get the variance? You've got now a hole in your backyard. I did have another question. I know I asked before, and I don't know if it was here or if it was at the site review, about putting it out in front of the house. And I had said, I'm assuming the septic's out here. Your drawing shows the septic's like closer to the house, and when I was out there, there's quite a bit of front yard. I know a garage in the front yard is not probably the most aesthetically pleasing, but you wouldn't have to move any dirt.
Well, the, while the septic is at, by the front porch, the drain field is the front yard.
Okay.
So, I...
That's not on the drawing, okay.
So, I don't know if I'd be, I don't know the rules.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to put it in your drain field, of course.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not an excavator, so I don't know about digging in the hillside, but there's enough property back there to be able to put it back there. And although I appreciate the effort of moving it, I still think, I think there's room to go back further and angle it more so that you don't need a setback. But, so, that's up to you. How far away from the property line is the hole now?
So, we are, where we went in is at 10 feet. So, our, so, we only started moving what would be, if you put the two, the 10-foot and the four-foot on top of each other, what would overlap there, if that makes sense? So, it's earth, dirt that would have to be moved regardless if you give it a variance or if it's 10-foot.
If it's 10-foot or, okay. Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to work with you guys, you know, I mean, I've made some concessions, you know, I'm trying not to make more work out of it than I have to, trying not to have to touch that retaining wall, you know. By going at four-foot, I'm minimizing any impact to that. You know, again, I keep, angling it is still, I mean, regardless, my front corner, even if I turned it, the front corner's still gonna be, you know, I would look to have it six feet away. If I go at 10 feet, it's in the middle of the garage, and then again, it's gonna continue to cause challenges. How do I get into the garage? You know, it's a very sharp turn from an aesthetic standpoint. Our backyard isn't the biggest because of the hillside, so then you start encroaching on that. If you move it over 10 foot, I'm just asking for, you know, I've made some concessions and hope you guys can see it the way I'm seeing it. Again, nobody's objected. My neighbors are perfectly fine with it. I'm just looking for a little cooperation, a little, you know, understanding, see what I want to do.
Well, I totally get it. I mean, I totally get what you want to do and why you want to do it. I might want to do it too. In fact, I'm looking at putting a pole barn in my yard, but I'm hiding it in the woods and I'm digging out the hillside so that it's hidden in the woods. And there's no, you know, I have more property, but... The objective of a variance, and at least this is my understanding, is that it's a hardship. Like, there's no other place to put it, there's no ability to put it somewhere else. And there is the ability to put it someplace else, so, I guess...
With challenges, though. I mean, the more, the more I go east, the deeper I go in, I'm building more challenges. You know, the deeper I go into the hill, now the higher my concrete's gonna need to be on the walls, which increases my costs, right? I know that's not what you guys are here to debate, but me personally, right, I have a limited budget. So, deeper I go in, the higher the concrete's gonna need to be, the more dirt that's gonna be, need to be moved, limited on places. So, I'm gonna have to figure out, how do I get rid of all the extra dirt, the deeper I go in and the higher I go? So, while there is possibilities, in my opinion, they're causing more hardship to me because there's more cost, more, potentially extra work now if I have to take a retaining wall down to dig my footers. So, yeah, I mean, while there's the possibility, it does cause hardship to me from a financial and a labor standpoint.
Does that retaining wall go behind whatever is under that green tarp?
Oh, no, the green tarp is in front, and that's just a bunch of firewood stacked on pallets right there.
Okay.
So, it goes behind it.
So, yeah, the retaining wall is to, I don't know my directions, to the left of that green tarp, back and to the left.
Back and, yep, exactly.
And that retaining wall was how large? How tall?
It's about waist-high, so, three foot tall.
No, but I mean, it's really hard to see, because when you look at the picture, it doesn't look like it's over, I know that was with snow, but...
Yeah.
I mean, this is the start of the retaining wall.
Right.
That's just a, that's just a stacked block retaining wall, it's not concrete, is it, or cement or together?
Yeah.
No, they're...
I think it's concrete block.
Concrete blocks.
Yeah, so that's, yeah...
Mm-hmm. It is work.
Oh, yes.
Okay. My problem, and as Tracy said, the granting of the variance, it's a situation where basically what we're saying is, okay, here's the rules. And these are what the rules are, and the rules have been established, and everybody within that area has to live by the rules. If we give a variance that says, okay, these are the rules, but now we bend the rules, we allow the rules to go over. I appreciate what you want to do. I know exactly what you want to do. I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's great to have someplace to go and be able to work and put around or whatever you want to do in a work like that. Unfortunately, it's because the property, the land, is such that it can accommodate what you want to do, but there are some give-ups in it. One of those give-ups we're talking about, whether it be moving part of the wall, whether it be having additional expense, that's part of the situation. What I can't personally get over in the rules that we have, that we set down and we analyze is, is that this is something that is, you know, you're doing it. It's not because you don't have a choice, it's because it's your election to do that. And that's one of the hard and fast rules of the analysis, is that if in fact it's something which is an elected item to do by the applicant, it's very hard to overcome. And that's unfortunately the problem I have with it. Number one is that it's, it is outside, you know, going from 10-foot to four feet in, which is one item. Then secondly, it's just the fact that it's your decision. It is not something that is thrust upon you by the property itself. And that's what we have to look at, is the property and what the property can do. So, because of that, I do have reservations on this thing. So, I'm, I, that's my particular opinion on this. So, but I'm one vote. Okay. So, are there any other questions or thoughts?
No, Paul, I'll agree with you. The requested variance shall not be necessitated by any self-created condition, and that, number six, and we have to answer that. And this is self-created. I'm sorry, it just, it's...
Well, before you vote, I mean, I know you guys have the rules that you have to follow, but just think of it if it was you, right? I mean, we're all neighbors, right? We all live in this community. We all want to improve our properties, to improve our property values. Again, I'm not intruding, I mean, I could barely see my neighbor's house half the time as it is. She has no objection to it. I know it's a self-created thing, right? I mean, yeah, there's that component of it, but then there's also, all right, we're neighbors here. We want your neighbor to have what he wants. It's his property or her property. So, I know where you're gonna vote. I'm really annoyed about it, but I mean, it is what it is. But before you vote, I just, just think about that, right? If you wanted to do that, if you were in my situation, do you want to intrude more on your backyard? Increase your costs now, because the concrete's gonna have to be more, because you're gonna have to go higher on the back and sides. Move more dirt. Now move a retaining wall that I wasn't planning on moving. I get what the rules are, I get why they're there, but then there's the other aspect of reality. Here's what's going on, right? Yes, it's self-created, I get that, but I just ask you to look at it from my shoes before you vote and why I'm doing it. Again, it's, just look at it from that perspective and really think about it, right, before you vote. That's all I'm asking.
We appreciate that, but we do, we really do. And it's always not easy to say no on something, but at the same time, we appreciate what you want to do, we understand it. But we talk about what the rules are, and you said the reality. And the reality is, is that we have an ordinance that we have to follow. And if we go outside that ordinance, it has to be for very good, solid reasons. And one of the ones, the toughest thing to overcome, is that if it is something which is an elected situation by the individual, it's very hard to overcome. That being said, do we have a motion?
Well, I would make a motion based on the staff review, that only five of the seven basic requirements have been met and satisfied, two of not, and the special conditions were not evaluated based on that, that we deny the variance.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Motion by John, and seconded by Rod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sorry, sir. All right. No other issues, so therefore we will open it up to public comment at...
We got public today to comment to?
At 7:10.
I was gonna say, has anybody introduced Sam?
Lindsay Wolf, East Bay Township President, fellow ZBA member. I just want to say, you know, you guys made a very sound decision. Thank you, Trent, for finishing what you started, I appreciate that. And thank you, P.T., for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has anybody introduced Sam?
No, but we should.
Sam, come up, please.
Come here, come here.
Sam is our SEDOM Fellow, and so you'll probably see him quite a bit over the next, is it still, you've only, what, two weeks?
No, I think we're at 14 months now. I've had to...
Oh, okay, so it's only 14 months now that you'll see him. But he's been at the office now a month and...
Seems longer.
And probably up to his neck and wondering what the heck he was doing. But, yeah.
I see that you and Leslie have met.
Yeah, absolutely. Partners in crime, right? Yeah, so I will be helping serve as the SEDOM Community Development Fellow for the township for the next 14 months, helping with a variety of different capacity, adding benefits to the township, and I look forward to working with you all. I know a few of you, and I look forward to getting to know you guys more.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, seeing nobody else, we will close it at...
Well, I'm sorry, I closed public.
At 7:12.
I would just like to also say thank Preston for his service. I know he's...
Thank you.
Paid very close attention to me when I came on board, helping me through some things and making time for me. I appreciate that. We had a very good relationship, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thanks, John, I appreciate it.
And I have to echo that. I have to thank you for all the work that you've done with me and for me and helped to shape me a bit, too. Maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah, but thank you very much.
No, you guys are, you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate it very much. The next meeting will be July 11th, and...
It looks like we don't have a meeting, because there's no applications on file. Claire sent an email out today.
Oh, okay.
There's no July 11th.
So, there's no July 11th meeting, okay?
Yeah, I was gonna say, unless something changed since last week, yeah, there was nothing in the hopper.
Okay, great, that's good, okay. So, with that, we will, this time, adjourn at 7:13.